Again, welcome, everyone. I'd like to welcome Peter. You weren't here last year. When we did this online, this will be a much better experience doing it live than online. It was hard to, when you're trying to do team building, it's hard to do it via Zoom. So this is perfect. One of the things that will help us grow the most, which might be difficult, is if we can be as honest as possible, because that'll, we can grow from that. So those are one of the things we kind of want to focus on. And let's see what else I have here. Oh, I have asked Steve to sit down with us. I would like him to share also, because I feel he is a part of our team, even though he is the manager and way above us in our thinking, but I think he'll be able to help us tremendously. And let's, oh, and so the only other thing I wanted to do is just take a minute to introduce Craig freshly. And he is the author, this is your third book, right, The Together We Decide, that you just did in 2022?
Yeah, yeah, it was just published.
Yeah, so that's fantastic. I know you had another book where you do a lot of facilitating and workshops and stuff centered around facilitating group growth and stuff. And I really enjoyed you last year, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to invite you back this year, because I think if we keep the same person helping us take these steps ahead, you'll become very familiar with us and we'll become familiar with your techniques. So I'm just going to now turn the whole meeting over to you, if that's okay. And you've got your speaker on?
I think so. Do I have a speaker on, Ben? Yeah. Would you mind putting my slide back up, Ben?
And remind people, when you go to talk, you're going to have to, just like when we're up top, just turn your speaker on.
Great, well, thanks. That's a nice introduction. Yeah, I've made a career out of working with groups. It's a little bit loud. Does it sound loud to you? It sounds loud to me. Okay, I get, I get to hear my own voice really loud. That's kind of weird, but, but this is the kind of thing I love to do. I work with a lot of town and city councils and school boards. And I, I think that the public service that you folks do as, as, as members of the city council is terrific. So I'm on, I'm on your side. And really, this evening, I'm going to try to execute a framework, the agenda. I'm going to explain it to you in a minute, but otherwise, I want to try to stay out of your way and let, and let you talk and help you come to some consensus. But I'm not the kind of facilitator that wants to push you through something you don't want to do or take a, take a heavy hand. Let me explain a little how it's going to work. And then I'd like everybody just to do a, a quick hello. So these are our objectives. Really, we're doing three things this evening. The third one kind of happens in the background, get to know each other and build enthusiasm for the, for the shared work ahead. As the mayor said, we're looking to, to be honest, and, and that will help make us stronger. But the first two things are like, you know, we're going to do A first in the agenda and then, and then B. We're going to talk a little bit about how we work as a, as a council. I'm going to begin by asking you, how do you think you're, you're, you're doing? Actually, for that part of the agenda, I'm going to ask you to write your ideas on these pieces of paper, and we're going to stick them up on the wall. And we're going to, hopefully, we're going to stick them up on the wall. And then we're going to move them around and, and organize them and talk about them. It's just a framework for us to, to talk about. The second part of the, of the meeting, we're going to look at our shared goals. And, and first, we're going to talk about how we expect to use shared goals. And then secondly, I'm going to ask you, what do, what do you think the goal should be? We have a draft that we're going to work from. I provided you each a handout. And right on the screen, we're going to be taking comments and, and, and make some changes to the goals as you see fit. Or we might just affirm them just, just the way they are. I do want to share with you some, some simple ground rules, things that I'm asking us to keep in mind. The first one says, think forward. And by that, I mean, well, really, the most important question in the room tonight is, how do you want to be going forward? We're going to talk about the past a little bit. We can tell some stories and whatnot. But really, what matters is, how do you want to be as a council? How? And what do you want to do as a council in terms of goals? So that's what I mean by think forward. Stay on high ground. If you've looked at the agenda carefully, you'll see that it says that we don't expect to come to decisions tonight. We expect to come to some general conclusions there. We're not going to call for any votes this evening, but it's really your city manager that is going to take responsibility for revising the goal statement, or maybe revising the code of conduct or whatnot, for you then to approve at a later meeting. No decisions tonight, but we're going to stay on the high ground and, and try to get consensus on, on a way. Ben, is that me, do you think that's?
I'm not sure if it is or not. Let me check.
Yeah, it looks like a loose connection here. Maybe, maybe I just fixed it. I think I did. That sounds great. Okay. Yeah, because we don't want to put up with that all night.
Ben, you're amazing.
Yeah, that was, you see how I did that? He just, yeah. Raise hands. Now, I don't know how strict we have to be about this. The point is, we want to make room for everybody. I want to give everybody a chance to weigh in. And if two or three hands go up at the same time, I might not call on the person who, in order, you know. I'm going, I'm always looking to hear from the person that we haven't heard so much from. And that's why I said raise with hands, check in with Craig. You can also show what you think, right? Sometimes I might ask, what do you, what do you, what do you think? And, and if you can show me a thumbs up or, or whatever, that's going to be really helpful. I bet you remember some of these ground rules from last year, too. I'm going to take some notes as we go. No decisions expected. And I know we, we might have members of the public viewing at home. Of course, you're welcome. But this is a discussion among the mayor, the council, and the manager. Participation is limited to the folks sitting right here at the tables, okay? Can I ask everybody to say hello? And I, I know we're doing serious business for the, for the city tonight, but I, I'm trying a little bit of levity here. Say hello. And if you could have a superpower or be a superhero in council meetings, what would it be? What super, what superhero would you, would, would you like to be? Or what superpower would you like to have? Anybody want to, want to, want to check in first with this? Somebody wants the superpower to fix Craig's mic, probably. The mayor will start us off.
I would like to be Wonder Woman because of the last sue of truth. She has that thing that, so if somebody's presenting something and I don't think it's quite truthful, we could just last sue them and they would have to tell us what was really going on.
That's a pretty good one.
I think that's the principle, the old principle in me, that I would like to be able to do that.
I do want to tell you, one time I was in a meeting and somebody said they'd like to be Wonder Woman, not for the superpowers, but for the outfit. That's not you. No. Someone else? Yeah, Pete?
It'd be nice to be able to read minds.
Read minds. Yeah? Okay, read minds. Tell me how you say your name.
Just Ann. Thank you. I would like the superpower of being able to translate one person's, what one person is saying to what another person, so that another person could understand it easily. And see, I'm not saying this well, but I oftentimes can hear two people talking, and they're saying the same thing, but they're not understanding each other at all. So I like to be a translator if I could.
I know exactly what you mean. There's a difference between how something is launched and how something is lands. And to have an automatic transl, oh, that's great. Yeah. Yeah. Someone else? Superpower, superhero?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Bob Stackpole, councillor. I, I'm thinking probably Obi-Wan Kenobi, you know, the, those aren't the droids you're looking for, you know?
These are pretty good. Couple more out there. Jonathan? Steve, you're, you're in, too.
I would want the superpower of ultimate anticipation.
Oh, ultimate anticipation.
Try to anticipate what's going to be asked for during a council discussion and such, and try to prepare for that.
The city manager doesn't want any surprises. Yeah, know exactly what's going to happen. All right, we've got Jonathan and Maura.
I'm not really, not something I'm good at.
No? Fine, you don't have to, you don't have to name something?
To me, it means like, yeah, I don't think I need a superpower.
That's the answer. She doesn't need a superpower. I love it.
I can just be a human and do what I want.
Yeah, right, right. You want to, you want to try one? You're, you're also allowed to play the card that Maura played if you don't want to do it.
Yeah, I'm just not really a superhero guy, so.
You're not a superhero guy. You're good enough just the way you are, yeah.
Not perfect, but I think what I got.
All right. Well, thanks for, thanks for doing that. Okay, let's get on with the agenda. So the first thing is a look at ourselves. And what I'd like you to do is think about the work over the past year of, of the council. And Pete, I know you're, you're new, but I, I'm going to bet that you've, you've watched the council over the past year. And the question I have for you is, what do you think has worked well? And what do you think has worked not so well? And, and I'm asking you to write answers with these markers that I've provided on these pieces of paper. And you might write three different pieces of paper of things that you think have worked well. And just a headline, right? Not a whole essay on here, but just a few words that capture something that you think that the council has done really well over the past year. And then another three pieces of paper. And here's where we're calling upon the honesty that the, that the mayor asked for. What does not work so well? Three headlines. If you want to just write one for each, that's fine, or two for each. But I'm going to give a minute of quiet time, couple minutes of quiet time. I'd like you to think about this. And what are the top three things in each category? What are your top, top three answers? What's worked well, what hasn't?
Three?
Would you be amazed if the council did three things well?
No.
Not well?
Like, I wrote down one.
That's, that's fine. If you only have one, that's fine. Any, any colored paper, any color marker? That's one, two. Is that on?
Take them, that's on.
All right, we'll try that. That's not. So I can't make it happen.
Yeah, it's just kind of random.
Could it be random? And not related to my movements at all? Okay, thanks.
Trying to find a solution, I guess.
All right, we're almost done. Just another half a minute, maybe another minute. So far. I wonder if it's, no? I, I don't know. All right, Bob's just finishing up. And we can add to this later, but let's, let's see what you got so far. What's worked well? Anybody want to hand me a piece of paper? Let's get started here. Here's one.
The Mayners.
The Mayners. Okay, that's worked well. We'll put that on the good list. Excellent. What else we got? What's worked well? Ann?
We adjusted to one subcommittee per month.
One subcommittee per month? Yeah, you got one like that, too?
Well, I've got a similar one, around the work that we do at the subcommittees.
The work done at some. Yep. And this says, work done as subcommittees typically doesn't need significant further discussion, right, related to just one, one per month.
Stay focused on these two of our large schools and counties. Whatever's been going on internally, we all need to cover that.
Nice, okay. This one says, revising the city charters. So tell me a little about that. What, what about?
Sorry. They did a tremendous amount of work, reexamining the current city charter and what has worked well, what has not worked well, getting into the governance structure of the organization. So it was, it was a very inclusive process with the public, and that translated through the city council as well.
Awesome. Okay, background information that they provided in advance?
That helps us make decisions and get decisions.
Right, right. Okay, very good. What else worked well?
Good decisions. We have a good process of working together and make good decisions.
Nice. I, I'd love to hear more from you or from anybody, but what, what about the process? Or what decisions are you particularly proud of?
Well, I mean, it goes to the other things I have here.
Well, let's see.
I think we, we listen to each other.
Nice.
And we do focus on serving the public.
Okay.
That's what, that's what our goal is.
That's what you're here to?
But we're here to do, right.
And focus on serving, serving the public. Okay. What else we got? What worked well?
If Larissa keeps us organized.
Okay, Larissa, Larissa worked well. And, and, and here, too, I want to ask a little more. What, what about the work? The, you know, what, when you say, keep us all organized, what are you thinking of?
She's the one who sent out all the information, the committees, the people, that she gives the correct information, all the backup, all the information.
She realized I was very confused, and she sent me out the whole month. I think she sent all of us the whole month's schedule because we're so busy this month.
Right, okay.
So she really just takes care of us.
So the links and the advance information, keeping you on track about what's happening when, you can count on her to be, to know what's going on and support you. Yeah, great. What else has worked well?
I was like, at this, but I noticed that I put the focus on the two largest goals. I'd just like to say, success with a prior focus that we stayed focused on, just to point out that if we stay focused, we do have success, led to the RACE grant, which is a $25 million grant for the roads. And roads became a focus. That focus and that continued effort without losing focus led to something good. So I think that's, you know, I'd kind of like to say, you know, if we continue to focus on housing and on the fire station, it will lead to something good. You've got to stay focused on your primary goals.
Right. You were focused and it resulted in?
Success because of that.
Yeah, that's great. Are there any other pieces of paper out there? What worked well? Referencing long-range planning.
I think that goes to the, to the same thing that the deputy mayor was expressing. The, the city council has done exceptionally strong job in not, not letting off the pedal, going, going back to the, the important parts, such as the fire station and
Okay.
roads and, and all of that that's culminating into some very successful projects.
You could actually take the schools. When we, when the schools was our focus, that led to success.
I have two more. One's very simple, attendance.
Oh, nice.
Our whole group is really good at making sure that the right meetings.
Okay. And what else you got?
And I actually put Steve's wisdom down here because I really depend upon him for a lot of the background information, like if we're in the middle of a meeting and I have a question, I know he's going to be a great resource for that. So I think that was important.
That's because his superpower is anticipating our every.
That is, that's right.
The volume of work. You guys got, got, got through a lot of stuff, I guess. Revising the city charters, Steve's, Wendy's, Larissa. Okay?
And Craig, I think I have one that ties in to volume of work as well as attendance, is our use of Zoom meetings. Our continued subcommittee Zoom meetings, I think, are really going well. And I love the use of Zoom meetings for public participation in our in-person meetings. I think it's been really successful. I'm glad we're keeping it going.
Nice, okay. Are there any others out there?
My last one is that I think we did a great job this past year doing a lot of workshops, which took staff and our time. But we had both public workshops where we really encouraged public participation, and we had council, more council workshops than normal.
Nice, okay. I've made some categories here. Let's, let's, let's try them out. I have, yeah. Volume of work, attendance. This I'm calling engagement. Productivity. Pre-info. Staff. Use of Zoom meetings was one that helped you with engagement. And this one says, focus. And by the way, the Mayners were pretty good, too. Yeah. Revising the city charter. That's, that's a, that's also a, a productivity one. I mean, I just made it up on the spot, but you're very appreciative of Larissa and Steve. They, 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 they helped the council work well, keeping the focus. The thing with the subcommittees and providing organized information in advance, you got a lot done. And just, not only you, but the public are engaged. You might organize it differently, but that's the quick and dirty. Any comments or reflections on that? Let's look at the other side. What, what hasn't worked so well?
One, I think, yeah, listening.
Speaking of communication.
I think we fail to listen and understand and respect different opinions. I think when we fire up and we snap, I think it's because we're taking outside influences, bringing them in and taking it into the group of seven and how we're, we as a group are trying to work towards consensus and understanding. And I think when we allow the outside to get in, it can make us a little snappy. And so we need to make sure to listen to each other and take a deep breath and make sure to try to understand each other before we make decisions. Even if in the end, we don't change anybody's opinions, we have to make sure we understand why our opinions are coming from where they're coming. And the other thing I think we do poorly with communication is, we fail to educate ourselves often about, we should, we had, you know, situations where we were upset, we didn't know something. And in all honesty, if we as a counselor, as an individual counselor, had done a little bit more work on background information, I don't go to every sub, I don't have to go to every subcommittee, but I do look at their background. What are they working on? What, you know, where's it coming from? What's their backup information? How can I educate myself and stay informed about what they're doing?
Okay.
Without having to, you know, make them always have to tell me. I should do some of that work.
Right, right. Okay, very good. That's super helpful. Thanks for starting us off. Somebody else? What didn't work so well?
I think these two are very similar to what Maura just did. I said, council members not hearing both sides before making a decision. And I think that's not having, reading the whole, well, my second one is, or is it, not, members not pre-reading the agenda materials.
Okay.
And so they're making decisions without all the information.
Right. So really, we have two different kinds of educating ourselves. One is educating ourselves about the points of view of each other. And two is educating ourselves about what's going on out, outside, or the, the more sort of quantitative data, information. Okay, well, we'll organize these as we go, but let's, let's get some more up here, please.
In this past year in particular, in line with the deputy mayor's comments, we didn't do as well with friendly disagreement. I think that's an important
Okay.
skill is to be friendly, have friendly disagreement, and it didn't work as well this year.
Yeah, I might come back to that, but I want to see if it comes up in with other, with other words. What else we got?
So I just wrote down patience. I think this, you see a theme emerging here. Patience, tolerance. And I think by not having those things, it prevented us from, at times, finding the best answer from the group.
Right. Okay. It compromised your ability to make good decisions when you were impatient and not tolerant. Tolerant, patient, finding the best answer. Okay. What else? Didn't work so well?
Be more visible.
Oh, okay. Tell me more, what you're, what are you thinking?
Disconnect with the voters. Oh, I'm sorry. This is disconnect with the voters.
Disconnected with the, with, with the voters?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's one, too. We might talk about a little more, but I want to see what else. Anything?
Well, one thing that was kind of a, one thing that was kind of a big deal recently was the trails issue. So I think that came out of another committee, and maybe we could have handled that whole process a little bit better. So I just figure I'll throw that up there.
Is there something in particular that you or anyone thinks did not work well with the process? I'm, I'm fishing for specifics here. What about the process? Anything come to mind? And if nothing does?
Well, I think the action plan may have gotten short-circuited a little bit.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure what that means, but I imagine you do.
Yes.
Okay, I thought you.
There's differing, there's strongly differing opinions. There's strongly differing opinions on that. And it was a recent one, so.
Yeah.
So we'll be revisiting that, but...
Okay, when we talk about the goals.
Something that didn't work so well.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Bob?
I just want to say I don't think the council was presented with enough options.
Okay.
It was very black and white.
So you have, I'll give you a rough idea. We have trails that are being severely compromised. And it's because of ATV use. And so the ATV community wanted more opportunity to try to resolve the deterioration. And the people who built the trails are saying this, the deterioration is hurting the environment. It's going to continue to get worse. So there's a, so we decided ATV should no longer be on the trails. And part of our goals is to work on resolutions this coming year. But they're not, the ATVers are not happy.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's kind of where it all comes from. So there's a differing opinion on this, on the ATV situation.
Okay, thank you. Please.
And it's not just an ATV disagreement. People like walking their dogs. They like being private. But I just got a complaint that these trails are being referred to as drug trails. And there's needles on them, so we have to address that too. And better come up with a...
Well, that's a lot of ATVers trying to convince us that they were part of the police.
I didn't get an ATV complaint. I got a drug complaint. And our trails are called the drug trails, so we have to work on that.
I never see them.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting me in on what that is. Because it does help to know the details, of course, so we can do better going forward. That's what it's all about. Doesn't matter who's to blame or, you know, in the past. How do we prevent and make things better going forward? So this is great. What else didn't work so well?
This might be an appropriate time for this one. Council members staying angry with one another.
Staying angry, okay, right. Well, I'm going to put this one next to the friendly disagreement. Any others?
This is different. Sometimes we disappear into weeds, like into topics that aren't. We decide we're going to pick one out of thin air. It's not on our goals and objectives. It takes staff time and focus away. And there's, I think we need to do a better job of making sure that if we're going to pick up a topic, the entire council, if it's a big enough topic, the entire council is in agreement that should be added to the goals, not just become another topic without that buy-in. Because we have to stay focused.
Okay.
And that happens more than it should.
Other things that didn't work so well? Yeah, how many you got over there, Steve?
Yeah, I would contribute this, you know, embracing diversity of input or thought was...
Embracing diversity of thought.
Not embracing.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, are there any others out there?
Probably back to Steve, giving think time. Sometimes you just need to chill out for a minute and let all the counselors turn.
Right. Any others? He's got one more card he's going to play.
One thing I think could do better, hopefully we'll...
Oh, okay. Okay.
I don't know if that's something we're working on, but hopefully we'll make some more improvements.
So I don't have any fancy headings here, but you can see how I've grouped them. Let me just go back even for my own processing. This one says communication. We fail to educate ourselves as well as we should on our work progress, pre-reading the agendas. I'm going to say educate ourselves. Thanks for your patience here. And then the next one says, communication. We fail to listen to, understand, respect points of view, not hearing each other before making a decision. And that one, I think, is similar. That says embracing diversity of input thought.
What about finding the best answer?
What's that?
What about finding the best answers?
Yeah, finding the best answers. These, I think I'm going to, trails issue is not resolved because I think some of you have said you didn't find the best answer with the trails issue. So let's just say finding the best answer. I think that's a perfectly good heading for this category. We can change these later. Of course, I'm doing this very quickly. But it does help me to put some structure around and hopefully helps you. This has to do with the way we handle conflict. And then there's one here about tolerance, patience, giving time. I'm just going to call it patience. And then there's a couple here, be more visible, too much into the weeds, and attracting business. I don't think those really make a category, not that they're not important at all, but they're a little bit different. I don't know, do you like this organization? What do you think of this? So what this does is it suggests what it is we have to work on, I guess. And this is tough. As public servants, as elected officials, you are often under time constraints, right? You have to balance finding the best answer, trying to be tolerant, patient, et cetera. But so often you don't have the luxury. Am I right? Yeah, so what do we do? What is an elected official to do in these circumstances when you don't have enough time? Sometimes you have to make decisions knowing that you don't have the best answer. Should you take as much time as it needs, no matter what? Or is there a place for saying, even though we know it's not the best answer, it's the best we can do with the time we had? I don't know. I'd love to hear what you think about this tension between wanting to find the perfect answer, but only having enough time to find a good enough answer.
So I think if I were to comment is that I think sometimes when you're faced with a screaming public, the loud voice in the room.
A screaming public.
The loud voice in the room.
Yeah, right.
I think what a lot of us tend to do and we shouldn't do is react to that loud voice.
To the loud voice.
Because a lot of times, and this is where we're not listening to, like, that loud voice oftentimes isn't the majority. That's the hard part to accept because the loud voice just, you know, they're the ones at risk. They're the ones with the fear that something is wrong. And you have to step back and you have to take the time to look at the entire picture because it's not just about the loud voice. It's about all the people who aren't speaking, who may be afraid to speak out about the situation, who, we have to speak for those who can't speak for themselves. So if we don't take a deep breath, step back and do the basic background information and set aside the dramatic, I think we make poor decisions.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, the whole ATV situation, I think, is a perfect example. I think we've added to our goals a little bit of take back. Let's look at this from a, let's look from a practical point of view. Let's just not listen to the loud voice in the room because some of us here would be saying, you know, I actively, I'm going to keep using the trails and I'm sorry for this because I think it covers a lot of...
It's a recent example.
It's a recent example. It covers a lot of things. I actively use the trail. I've seen the significant deterioration year after year. I see the potential for it to be really bad. I see all the impacts. I also know there is a quiet majority who have been threatened, who are, who use the trails actively, who disappear from the trails while the ATVs are there. We have had some significant environmental impacts, all of this.
You can see both sides.
Right. You can see both sides that way. And unfortunately, what we need to do is take a step back and say, can we mitigate what are the concerns that caused me to want to stop ATV use? Can we mitigate that? Because if we can mitigate that and if we can come up with solutions, you know, maybe we can still have this. Maybe we can find some way around them using that in-town trail and having some other alternative. What can we do to resolve the issue? And it's a lot easier when there's nobody screaming in the room.
Right, when there's no loud voice.
You can do the work you need to, to come up with the best solution.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, I think that's, and that happened a lot to our city council.
That was one example, but this type of thing happens.
Because we feel we need to solve people's problems immediately. And we don't, sometimes the best solution takes some time and we need to know how to speak to our public to explain how we are doing the work and how we hope to come to a resolution that everybody can be satisfied with.
Okay. Thank you for saying that and kicking off this discussion. We're not going to have a big, long discussion here, but it's kind of a big thing for you. So do others have a contribution to this? What do you think? Yeah, Jonathan?
So I'd just like to point out that we did have, you know, going back to trails, we did have a group that was working on this longer term. We had a plan in place and there was what at least appeared to be a sudden, hey, we're going to do this. And that got pushed through quickly without a lot of real discussion. So I think that's part of the issue here.
Would you have preferred then that the council maybe not have taken such an active role and given the issue back to the group that was working on it?
That's what I would like to have seen.
Okay. That's a different perspective than the council taking a mitigating role. But I really appreciate hearing that.
Well, the, I think the mitigation would come out of that. But it wouldn't necessarily be, let's just shut off this thing immediately.
But do it over here.
But, you know, take a step back and look at it and see what we can do to mitigate.
Nice. Thanks for saying that. Yeah, other views here?
Well, not to a specific topic, but in general, I think it's important that we understand that in certain circumstances, we can table issues. We can send them back to subcommittee, which I know we've done on occasion. Certainly, there are some things that need immediate, that are time-sensitive immediately. And then it's tough if you feel like you don't have the answer at that point in time. But I think that as a council, we have to remember that there are certain circumstances where we can request more time and more information. And so we should keep that in mind as part of our discussion as well.
I'm hearing some great little solutions here, and this plays into something that I heard Mara say. Resist the temptation to try and provide a quick answer and an immediate fix. You don't always have to do that. You're the city council. You're thinking big picture, long-term. And even though voices are loud, you don't need to satisfy those angry people right away.
And just a quick side comment, I think it's interesting that we likely disagree about which voices were loudest in the room.
Oh, okay.
It's really interesting perspective-wise that, I'm just guessing, if we dove into it further, we might disagree about whose voices was really loud in that conversation from the start.
Any others? Please.
Well, I'm going to stay on the trails committee because it is probably the best example. So when you look at everything that the council is expressing that they have done well in the past year, long-range planning, they established a task force. They identified a group of people that wanted to work on the solution, specifically to the solution. They established a task force. They spent almost a year working on that. They came out with a huge set of recommendations, all these options and such, and then pitched it back to the council. It's back in your purview. You are the authority having jurisdiction over this section of trail. New Parks and Recreation Director comes along, drills it down to a one-page policy. The policy was adopted by the city council, but there was no time to implement. So the first piece in that policy was, there's supposed to be a report out at the end of the trail season on what took place. What was there for complaints? What have we seen for conditions and such under that? All of the active pieces that were proposed to do mitigation aspects as far as putting money into the trail, trail enforcement and such under that were being worked on but never implemented. The item that was called on the agenda did not fully inform the entire council as to what was going to take place. It was an item to review. From that came a motion to no longer allow motorized use. It was supported and passed. Right? So the loud voice came after the fact because they weren't, they didn't have prior notice.
So what should happen different in the future? If, how could we as a council and interacting with you as a city manager do this better next?
It gets back to what was expressed earlier about not finding the best solution.
Yeah.
So now that we've worked on it further, I've been able to work on it further by directive. There are other alternatives and solutions that weren't put on the table at the time that those decisions were made. The council says they're going to revisit that so we can go back, we can go back when they so choose, if they so choose to do that. So I think it's a prime example of everything that the council does well. But all of those things that they do very well got broke in this one instance.
Right, when the voices get loud, when there's the press of time, et cetera. It's easy to drop these things.
Passionate people on both sides of the equation, motorized versus non-motorized, trying to find services to satisfy the diversity of the entire population. It's a case study.
Any other comments here? By the way, I'm really appreciating the restraint of those who have spoken already. I mean, I know that this is a charged issue and there's probably an impulse to... Yeah, yeah, okay, fair enough.
And we all understand our different points.
And I'm not so interested in solving this particular issue. I'm trying to tease out the lessons that you can apply going forward on how to do things better. That's why we're talking about this.
So we've all fielded pros and cons in our voter bases. So we all have different voter bases. Some are more, maybe your voter base doesn't want the motorized trail at all, so you would have that. I've been getting all three, four against and just make it a walkway and that's it. People want it more policed and more cleaned up. And that's where they're at, over everything else, to make it safe, maybe a park right through the city. So there's a lot more to do to make this safe for the citizens. And that's my first goal. And that's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks for weighing in. Please.
I think we refer to our city goals and activities. We actually have a goal. And it does have a fun, engineer study of rail trail to deter sustainability for mixed-use cost of fuel and annual maintenance.
And I'm going to suggest we expand that based on a conversation I've had with Mr. Buck regarding this issue, that we look at also alternative routes. So, because if we can satisfy both sides with the alternative route that gets them where they want to be to begin with and keeps, you know... So I think that is, yes, that's a great goal. We adjust, yeah, that's huge. We adjusted this knowing that this had to be a topic and it was an important topic. And we knew that some of the planning stuff that we have on our, had on our agenda is going to be not feasible this year with the planning department short-staffed. So we cut back a little bit there, so it really makes sense for us to do some work on the trails. So I think we're all committed for whatever differing points of view we have here. The one thing I think that is happening is that we're coalescing around the fact that we need to find some sort of a solution because it is, essentially what it comes down to is that trail cuts from Lebanon and gets them back onto the Waterboro Trail, but it goes through town. And so like, how can we do this and not have them go through town? I think that's, you know, can we?
It opens up the whole state to ATVs.
Yeah, right, right. A lot of people are coming through here.
If we can, everybody's happy. If we can't, how do we, can that trail be better improved and have, can we come up with the maintenance cost?
In another town to come in a different way.
So we know that we have to really put our, it's the fetus of the fire. We have to work on this issue. We have to come up with good solutions because there are two sides, very strong sides to this issue.
Okay. Well, we're going to talk about goals more in a minute, but you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to share that with Jonathan because I knew he was very passionate about this. And I didn't want to go on to another topic without him knowing that it was a part of this document.
Very good.
So I wanted to share that with you.
Let's stay on the how we do our work for just a few more minutes. We're coming up on 7 o'clock. But I'm going to provide this handout that I provided to you. But I'm going to provide this handout that I provided to you last year when we planned this agenda. Those that worked with me on that, it was Maura and Becky and Steve, we thought it would be good to just quickly review this. I don't intend to spend a lot of time on it. But the mayor mentioned, I just published a book. It's called Together We Decide. And I've been collecting best practices for years in working with town and city councils and school boards. And this is just what I have, in my experience, found what works best. The why stuff, why be a high-functioning group? I don't think I'm going to talk about that so much. You can read it yourself and you know that there are many benefits. If you invest in your own process, if you work hard at trying to be a high-functioning group, there's a lot of benefits. In my experience, here's what the best groups do. First of all, understanding before judging. Don't make assumptions. Make sure we educate ourselves. Take time to listen to each other, that sort of thing. Maybe you've heard the term contempt before investigation. I'm guilty of that. You know, it's easier to be mad at my neighbor than talk to my neighbor. It's easier to make a quick negative judgment than it is to stay open-minded and get the real story. But members of the high-functioning groups are truly open-minded. Clear roles and expectations, that's a big one for a lot of groups. I love that you have in your own code of conduct some very strict rules about that, that council members shouldn't be talking directly to city staff, et cetera. Stay in your lane. That's huge. It is, when people don't understand their responsibilities as counselors or as staff and go into and, you know, get into somebody else's business, that is a huge source of conflict and inefficiency. Lose with grace. You know, I often judge someone's character on not how they win, but how do they lose? And you can't win them all. You know that. As city councilors, you're going to win some and you're going to lose some. And when we're professional about our job and we want to contribute to a high-functioning group, we lose with grace. We say, okay, I lost that one. And because, you know, I don't agree with you on this thing doesn't mean I'm going to use that as a weapon against you or doesn't mean I'm not going to work with you on this other thing. We take them one at a time. We lose some, we win some, we go on with grace. Public unity and respect, whatever the decision was, even if it's not something that I would have decided when I'm out there in the public, I'm a member of the council and I support that decision. If it was a good process, okay, I lost that one. I still publicly demonstrate unity. And the last one here, do what you say. Actions aligned with what you say as individuals. The quickest way to build trust is to do what you say you're going to do. And honestly, the mistake is usually caused not in the lack of doing, but in the volunteering in the first place. Right? That's the fault. And as public officials, it's so easy to say the thing that's going to please the constituent in the moment. But if you can't follow through or if you don't, it's going to come back to bite you later. So as members of high-functioning groups, we're very restrained and disciplined about what we agree to and what we don't agree to. And there are some beliefs here too, some attitudes. Because I think that not only the stuff that you do is important, but the stuff that you believe, the things that you carry around within your head, and this first one is big. I don't know. You know, of course, you're the city councilor. You know a lot about the city, but to carry an attitude of, I don't know everything, or I might be wrong, I'm willing to change my mind, that can be really, really helpful. Respect for each and every person. Show it. Public praise, private criticism. You have some things in your code of conduct about this too. It's very impressive. And I want to help us. You know, sometimes it's said that as a member of a team, I want to make my teammates look good. I want to make the council look good. I'm not here to just make myself look good. I want to do things that are going to contribute to the team or make my fellows look good. These are attitudes that I found are super helpful. That's a very quick rundown. But any questions or reactions? Do you, what do you think of this? Anything you want to add in your experience? Steve's got one.
I've been watching too much mob shows on TV like Tulsa King or something. So under respect for every person, it says, I don't want to beat you, I want to help you.
Yeah.
Right? I get what it's saying, but there's an undertone there.
Yeah.
I don't want to beat you. Oh, I want to help you.
I'm on your side. I want to support you. And I understand that we have a disagreement. But let's figure out what our underlying interests are. And if I can learn your interests and you learn my interests, we have a better chance of meeting both of our interests. And, you know, we're on the same team.
I always have the thought process, if I sit on a board and I'm a voting member, if I've had the opportunity to express my point of view, I'm good.
You say it and then you let go.
And if there's a vote that occurs, I'm good.
Yeah. This is the attitude that works really well if you're a member of a board. Any other contributions to this?
I'm not good at that.
You're not good at that?
Hey, we're all the same.
Well, here's another one that's super helpful, is when you call yourself out. And you just did that.
I get to make my own decisions all day. Like really hard, that's one of the things that's hard for me to do. I'm probably better at it than when I started, a lot better at it, but yeah, I'm never good.
Yeah. Nice. Any other comments on this? Anything else at all? Because we're about to change the workshop here. We're going to start to talk about your goals. We, you know, we've spent the first hour or so of an hour and a half workshop talking about how you do your work. If you've been kind of thinking, I'd like to say this or that about anything on the wall or anything on this handout, now's the time. Any last comments or questions? Please.
Piggybacking on Steve's last comment, it just so reminds me of, my husband always says, you can't make me not like you. And so I have to remember when we're dealing with people who are angry at us as a board and stuff, you just, I keep that in my head. You can't make me not like you. Because if you show that you like a person, they're more willing to maybe calm down and listen to the other side and stuff. So I just keep that in my head.
Right. Thank you, thanks for saying that. Yeah. Yeah, it's an attitude that you carry with you. Any others? All right. Very good. Thanks for doing all that with me. You know what I would suggest is just turn them all on and leave them on the whole time. I don't think that would be a problem. Well, then you would not be able to mutter under your breath. That's true. Thanks. Okay, these goals. So I've given you the handout. This draft is of January 3rd of last week. Some of you put your heads together and revised the previous draft down to a somewhat concise four-page statement of what you intend your goals to be. We're going to work through these in just a minute, section by section. I'm going to ask you what about each section should be changed. But before we even do that, I'd like to have a little discussion about how you're going to use these goals. How will they guide us? What will be, what are the appropriate roles? Whose responsibility are these goals? So let's just jump in. If you have a point of view on how the council should use these goals, I'd like to hear that. Please.
I look at them as a way to focus our energy and keep us on track.
So by our energy and keep us on track, you mean the council or the city or the...
Well, I mean, I think this holds the council accountable for keeping the work that we have staff do and our time on track with a specific set of goals that are moving us in a particular direction.
So let me go a step further. Well, how are council meeting agendas set? Is it the mayor that decides the agenda? And so is it true then that if something is not listed as a goal, it should not be on the agenda? How do we, you know, how do we operationalize what you're saying? Let me go back to Ann and then I'd like to hear from you, Maura.
So obviously, there are certain things, I think that what it should do is keep us within a, it sets parameters for us to work within. And there's certainly going to be things that come up that we may not have thought of. You know, when COVID came, our priorities shifted to becoming fully, having Zoom meetings, for example, to go back to that. So we have to shift priorities and staff and resources to make that happen, right? So we never know what will come in the future. But these goals give us a place to work within and so that we don't spend an exorbitant amount of time working outside of our goals. So we might have things that come up as an agenda item, but I think it gives us a place to have a conversation about, is this something we put staff time, resources, budget into if it's not in our goals? And if it is, then to me, are we shifting our goals? What are we moving focus away from? So that would be how I'd approach it if something came forward to the council or to a subcommittee more commonly that wasn't within these goals. Is, do we really want to shift our goals to, or is that appropriate?
So if I can try to say that back to you a little bit. Give the mayor a little bit of discretion. Stuff comes up, of course, but if it's going to take significant energy before spending that significant, we should have as a group, a conversation, do we want to change our goals or whatever? Okay.
And I think we as counselors, when we ask for future agenda items, we really need to look at the agenda item you're asking for, where it's coming from, where it fits into our goals and objectives. So because sometimes, all of a sudden, someone will hit you with something and you think that, okay, this is important, I'm going to bring it up, I'm going to ask the council to work on it. We need to take more of a step back and say, wait a second, does this fit within our goals? Should I ask the council to revise the goals to fit this in because I think it's important enough? That's how we should think of it instead.
Okay.
Not just put it into our agenda, this is what I want. No, no, no.
Right.
I might want it, but does it fit? And if it doesn't fit, I need the support of my counselors. That's how we should be thinking.
There's some individual responsibility here. When the mayor calls for agenda items, don't be throwing stuff into the agenda that is not part of these goals. It's up to each of you. And even better yet, if you can show, I would like this on the agenda because it supports this particular goal. That's going to be super helpful. Okay?
Would it be appropriate for me to ask, how does this fit in with our goals?
What do you all think? I kind of hope you're going to say yes because I think that that is a good test. I understand that you'd like to put this on the agenda. It's not immediately apparent to me how this supports our goals. Can you make the case for me? And not in a, you know, gotcha kind of a way, but in a genuine, open-minded way. You want to understand how each agenda item supports the goals. Yeah. And you might take one or two things that don't. Like I said, stuff comes up. But to have that discipline, the framework. How else should the goals be used? Any other thoughts on this? Let's hear from Steve.
I'd like to offer, so there's been a couple of occasions over the last one, two years where the council's done a really exceptional job of, when they're assessing the amount of time and staff time and resources that it's going to take for whatever that item is, they've gone to the council first. So I'll reference you, like adult-use marijuana, big discussion as to whether that staff time was going to get assigned. They went back to the council first to see that there was the wherewithal for something to be passed and for that time to be appropriate. Mineral extraction is another large one, that that was a very important item. The council discussed that first before huge amounts of staff time were assigned to them.
Okay. So before obligating your staff to significant projects, ask the staff, you know, how much it would take and make that decision at the council level.
Well, I think it was more the council discussing that amongst them first.
Okay.
If there was not a majority of the council that was going to support a derivation and amendment going forward, why put the staff and the time and assign those resources? So they've done a very good job in that. I'd just like to see that be a recognition to continue that going forward.
Can I ask Steve a question as a follow-up?
Yeah.
So Steve, I know in the past, you've had counselors come to you and say, I want this done. And you feel, I think at times you're like, well, you know, it's a counselor asking me. But do you feel now, as things have changed and adapted, like, and we've made some adjustments, that you feel like you can say, look, you have to kind of make sure that the full council is in agreement, that this issue has to be done or this thing should be worked on? Because that's what I would feel that you should answer back. It shouldn't be an individual counselor coming to you for a major issue. Because most things that we should be handling, you know, should go through Larissa and it should be able to be managed through Larissa. When it gets to the point where you're going to have to be the leader and add, and kind of assigning staff time, in my opinion, that's a council decision. And I don't know how it's been happening because I know that there were various counselors, I don't know if now, but in the past, who have been like, do this.
Yeah, that hasn't been an issue over the last, most recent years. Again, I brought it up for the council to be aware that I think you've done a good job on those larger elements that are hugely consuming to staff, being mindful of the time that it takes in assigning that time and resources.
Okay.
There's always going to be small elements that aren't inside of your goals that need to be acted upon. But I'm just expressing for those items that are large items, for the council to have that decision amongst themselves first before it's only down at a subcommittee level.
Okay.
I have one question that was addressed in here. And so the comprehensive plan, and I went online to read our comprehensive plan, which was written in 2002 and updated in 2005. You don't think that's antiquated? So I'm looking at, what is the difference between these goals and our comprehensive plan? Because the comprehensive plan was mentioned in here, but I don't see how that comprehensive plan is relevant now.
Comprehensive plan is a document that comes through the planning department. And ours is out of date and it needs to be updated and it takes the planning department to do it. It's about how we envision our community, where we're going to see growth, where we want to mandate certain things. And without having that comprehensive plan, it's actually difficult to fix other things. It's hard to say, do we want to adjust zoning in order to accommodate the comprehensive plan? Without that comprehensive plan update, it's hard to do a lot of bigger projects. And Steve would agree with that. It's been a real challenge. So because of lost planning time, we discussed this a little bit, because of lost planner time, we don't have a lot of staff there. But we need to have, we need to have some of the discussions because some of our zoning is way out of date. You could talk to various people. It's just, it's antiquated. We at least need to start the discussions about, okay, when they get to the comprehensive plan, what do we see our community looking like? But that's, I think we try to adapt it, knowing that there's no time to actually do the comprehensive plan. Do you understand or...
Well, I mean, we are addressing it in here as part of our goals and yet we don't have an appropriate comprehensive.
Where is it in here?
It is under Strategy D, modernizing zoning and the future vision. It might be even a few other places. But it's mentioned in number one.
So D1.
Number two is mentioned. So I don't know if it's an other...
So what this would suggest, if you were to keep that, and again, we're going to go back through this in a minute, but we're on the, how are these goals to be used? This would say, if this goal was adopted, we would expect that the council would spend time making sure that the comprehensive planning effort is properly resourced and you're going to fire it up and push it to happen.
Do you mind if I trigger a memory?
What's that? Well, hold on a minute.
Yeah, but we discussed this with, and I might just be able to trigger a memory with Becky, because we were talking, the three of us, finalizing something. And we said to you, because of the situation planning, we had had, doing the comprehensive plan, actually accomplishing it as a major goal of ours. We had a discussion and said, that's not going to be possible. So we changed the significant word in that first one, is the ongoing work toward the accomplishment of the long-term goal. It's not a goal for this year. It's a goal that we need to keep in our head, but we know we can't accomplish immediately. And then we adjusted some of the things below it to say that we'll continue to discuss things that are important to the comprehensive plan so that as it's being developed, we've had some of these early discussions about where we see growth and... had some of these early discussions about where we seek growth and.
Except when we had that conversation, I didn't realize it was a 134-page-long document that was done in 2005, the last time.
We know. That's why we've been screaming about it for a few years.
Yeah. So I kind of think that might be something that needs to be put in.
Steve, can you explain why it's difficult to do right now?
Well, let me, we are sliding into talking about this goal, which I'm fine with, but let's go there. And in fact, we don't have to take these in orders. I think we should talk about Strategy D first. But I do want to ask if there's anyone else that'd like to make a comment about how these goals should work? The first question I asked you, how do you expect these goals to work? So far, we've heard that they should guide the council's really time. That's the biggest thing I've heard, is that the time that you spend in council meetings and the effort that you ask the city staff or committees should be guided primarily by these goals. We're on board with that? Okay. Are you willing to jump into Strategy D? Do you want to, let's go there first. And with each case, I'm going to do a little math here. We've got, I think, six of these strategies throughout the goals. And there's actually eight of them. So we're right on, we're right on schedule. It's 7:15. This is going to sound fast, but if we were to spend six minutes per area, right? So on Strategy D, we'll spend six minutes. On another strategy, we'll spend six minutes. We'll have a little time at the end. I can ask you if there's any other strategies or whatnot, but that's the pace I'm going to keep. I'm going to set the timer, six minutes, and we're going to talk more about Strategy D. The question is, do you like the way that these four activities are written or should they be adjusted in any way? You've set the stage more by telling us that the words are very specific. You're not expecting the council to achieve a revision of the comprehensive plan, but to facilitate and support the ongoing work to accomplish the long-term goal of completion of the plan, funding, staff, resource, et cetera.
So I think.
I think, I think you were saying, well, now I know it's 2005, it should be a big goal and by this year it cannot.
Well, I'm hoping that it can. I'd ask you to keep it as a goal. Achieving it in this year is going to be a stretch, but so we've recently identified a plan. It's going to depend upon a conversation that will be had after Thursday of this week and an interview on Wednesday of next week. If those, if the conversation and the interview go well, I could see that we would have two planners back in the city employee. And I would ask you that I could take one of those planners, our senior planner, and dedicate that person to nothing but the comp plan, no other work assignment as well. Code enforcement has come forward with a plan on how they could assume ownership of the permitting process in conjunction with a new planner that could potentially come in. And given that, and then hopefully the outside contractors are coming back online now, I think we could have a significant inroad into your comp plan in this calendar year.
All I can say in my comment here, everything under Strategy D. If it happens.
I'm sorry, and to look at our community and how we want our community vision to be. So that's, comprehensive plan is the mothership of getting that done, but everything in here is intended to work towards the goal of getting that done.
Do you expect it to be done by the end of the year?
It depends on staffing. And that's what Steve was just saying, that's a huge concern.
I think, well, under development. Would it absolutely be done in the council to adopt that by the end of the calendar year? No.
Last year was, we were like, then you need to get some, sub it out. Steve's like, there's nobody to sub it out to, everybody's too busy. So that was our conversation last year. So this has been on, this has been a priority for several years now. It's so critical.
Yeah, right.
And when you look at subsection four in there, meet LD 2003 requirements, you know, I have a personal frustration with that in that the city has a comprehensive plan in zoning that addresses high-density housing. LD 2003 makes us reexamine everything that the city has in place from a planning perspective to adapt to what the state has pushed down, right? So it's difficult for the community to know what's best for itself under a home rule aspect and adapt to LD 2003.
So this goal was mandated by the state.
Without having the updated comp plan, right? It's, you know, you can't have one without the other, so.
That wouldn't be there if it wasn't the state law.
I understand. So you kind of can't take number four away as much as you might like to because you need to meet the requirements of state law.
I just don't see the city council can take the foot off the pedal on Strategy D. It is one of the most comprehensive needs of the city right now.
Okay. Any other thoughts on Strategy D? I'm hearing that this is a relatively high priority. We might at the end go back and I can give you my reflection of what I think are your highest priorities, but I've heard several of you say that this is a high priority. Easy to say on the first one.
Well, I mean, if you talk to the economic development director, he'd tell you the same thing. So I'm sitting here, people might say economic development as we go through it. Economic development director would look at you and say, that needs to get done.
Yeah.
You know, so that's what people need to know.
We're going to move on to another section unless somebody has an additional comment on the comprehensive plan focus for Strategy D. You want to go back to the beginning? Let's go to, we're in Goal I, Roman numeral I or Goal One, Community Development. The goal statement is to create an economically strong and attractive community that is able to accelerate and sustain growth for existing business and attract future business investment. If you have suggestions as to how that should be reworded, I'd love to hear it. And I'd also like to jump into Strategy A, which is specifically the downtown, and take your comments on how that might be revised. Take a few minutes. Let's do this. Let's take it, just take it 30 seconds of quiet time and read through one through seven.
I feel better now. Sorry. Been holding that one in. Oh, no. Okay, thank you. That's awesome though.
Questions, comments here on Strategy A? Number seven, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, Pete.
I've got two on four and five. I don't have enough experience. I don't know who the Friends of Downtown are or Heart and Soul or Main Downtown affiliates. Are these citizens, is this out of state? So I would want more information before I could get behind anybody that's from out of the area. I'd rather have our local citizens have more of a say.
I think Ann can answer that for you.
Okay.
They're outside groups.
And that's what I want to find out.
So I, and we could certainly talk more about Friends of Downtown over coffee if that would be helpful or invite you to some of the meetings. But in general, it's, I really consider it grassroots efforts of local business owners, citizens, leaders of organizations in our community that agree that our downtown needs specific attention for revitalization. The Heart and Soul program is available online. They have lots of great information to look up. And they're not a meme-based organization, but they've helped, for example, Biddeford and many other communities here in Sanford, just work on the first steps of revitalization of their communities in general, not necessarily downtown. But, and then, and Biddeford again is a great example. They were a Heart and Soul community prior to the work that they've begun in their city. But I don't know.
It must be like the National Downtown Program readjusted. I mean, because Sanford Downtown Legacy was part of the National Downtown Organization and it's a pronged, you know, proven method for revitalizing downtown. And you kind of follow the steps and you get kind of support services of information, examples, suggestions, all fed to the larger group that you can feed off of. And you kind of, you follow the program, but you do it as local people.
So we wouldn't have to follow outside influences that wouldn't benefit the city of Sanford? We're not bringing in an organization that's going to maybe want us to be like Texas or Biddeford when we're Sanford?
Oh, no. You define yourself.
Okay.
And then you kind of, like, you make sure to market yourself, you look for businesses to fill the spaces, you do all this stuff, but you do it yourself. You're just using their tried and true methods and learning from them, right? That's the best way to say it.
So it's just an influence on how to follow things? They're not.
It's a procedure for gathering information from your community, to see what people want to see in the community, what they feel is the heart of your community and how to, you know, bring that forward and improve upon it is kind of the way I look at it. But I think the point of the goal is supporting efforts, and Friends of Downtown is in here. We can certainly take out that neem in particular, but organizations focused on our downtown revitalization. So instead of, to me, that's about making sure we don't have roadblocks for organizations that want to improve our community and that we're willing to partner with them. And so I'd also, I mean, the Oakdale, Friends of Oakdale Cemetery came up this morning at one of our subcommittees. And it's not unlike that where we're recognizing that as a city to partner with, you know, public organizations and community members is how we can make improvements to our downtown. It's not going to be city council and ordinances, it's going to be supporting partnerships that can help us move forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
People with a passion for the downtown.
Hold on a second.
Right. And so it'll address the voters, so.
What would be the city council role? How would the city council support? Number four and five both say support.
So you're looking to me for an example?
Yeah, or anybody.
I mean, I would share an example this summer of the car show that in particular Friends of Downtown brought to the community. Again, it was a really popular event in the past and that organization brought it back, but it wouldn't have come back without the support of our police department, our fire department, the city council approving the closure of the streets. So that's what.
So you're deploying city resources to help them achieve their objectives of downtown revitalization.
Which is, it betters the, it betters the community.
And the downtown legacy we did at Palm Can drop, the city supported it. So that sort of stuff.
Okay, very good. Let's make sure we take comments on any of these others. Steve?
I think four, five, and six can be combined into a single point. They're saying a lot of the same things.
Yeah.
And that organization is just, you couldn't have a better organization to accomplish, you know, community building and the assemblage of interest in the downtown. There's so much, so I think four, five, and six can be combined. I think one, two, and three can be combined as well as far as ensuring the support and using the, of the Growth Council and using the Growth Council as your conduit for the needs assessment, for the parking, promoting and marketing the downtown, you know, the Y to stop and eat and shop. And I'd move number three, parking, down to number seven as the RACE grant. You know, on-street parking is in the scope of the RACE grant. That needs assessment was done. Structured parking has not been done as part of the RACE grant, but can be part of the overall continued examination of parking in the downtown. So I think you could get those seven down to three major points.
That's good.
Does anybody have objection with?
No, that's really good.
You like that idea?
Yeah.
And just to clarify, number seven, it starts with host public hearings for a RACE grant, but the bigger part of this is to complete final design for the RACE grant, to include all these things and parking would be part of that. And I just want the council to confirm, you expect that design to be completed by the end of the year? It's going to start with public hearings, but.
Those are federal deadlines.
Yeah.
It won't be done at the end of the year, but they'll have, by November, they'll have the next public hearing for 80% design completion. We've been working on this for years.
Excellent.
Engineering's already engaged and so.
This is the one thing I actually haven't kept focused on and dropped that grant.
Yeah.
Now we've got a grant and how it's happening.
Okay. Are you ready to move on? The next one, housing. Let's take just 30 seconds. I want you to familiarize yourself with what this says and then we'll take comments.
I have a question about that. Is, we're losing a lot of families to other towns when they get older, they get bigger and they go to other towns for whatever reasons. I'd like to keep our families here. Is there some, that other cities do, that they can come up with like a brokerage for first and second-time home buyers so they'll stay in our area? Is that a thing? Because that would be very beneficial to the families, the young families in our city. So that's my one thing on housing. We'd like to keep our families in Sanford, to graduate from Sanford High School, not go to another town where we can read about, you know, their accomplishments because they're good families. You know, we all know each other.
What do other councillors think of this idea of adding a little bit more meat to housing to keep families here?
Well, you can't do it through mortgages. So we can look at, the only thing I can think is looking at the idea of what is causing people to leave Sanford. You can't do anything through mortgages. That's a banking issue and Sanford doesn't offer mortgages as a city.
Right.
So, and we don't offer any, we don't have the capability of offering any, the banks any benefit to offer second mortgages only to people here. So that we don't have the, that's not our job. But, I mean, why are people choosing to move to other communities? Typically, it's taxation that they move or there's a belief system that they'd rather be in a rural area. I mean, that's something, they're just.
So many.
Well, it's interesting because I think the trend is going to be going the other way. I think the newer, younger generation wants to be in more urban areas than rural areas. So believe it or not, I think that trend's about to shift. These are choices that people make based on the lifestyle they want to lead and, you know, I see, I see tons of families moving into the community as well. So I don't, I don't know what to say. I don't know if it's something.
My whole goal is just to try to keep our families.
Yeah, I know that house prices are pretty high, so.
But they're higher outside.
Right. So that we can't control.
If you go outside, then it might be a little less depending where you go.
Do any other councillors have an opinion on how to facilitate families staying in Sanford? Can the city council play a role here?
Yeah, so it's about the diversity of housing. So we've seen a really good trend where there's been a lot of senior-focused housing being built in the community, you know, 55 and older. Seniors are finding their homes as they age to be less affordable to maintain. They don't need their three bedrooms and plus and so. So they're moving into these now-available units where they used to go to other communities to get those units. They're now available in Sanford and that frees up the single-family home for those families to occupy because that's the space that they need. They're, the families then paying higher taxes, right? Because they have a greater amount of space and they have the kids in school. It's a really good separation of time and need.
So you're seeing a positive trend right now without any activity.
It's about the diversification, working on the diversification of housing.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any other points of view? Hold on just a second. I just want to make room for others to speak. And please.
Yeah, you know, I think we, and we do a pretty good job at this, but we need to incentivize people to stay in Sanford because of the services that the city provides.
Okay.
You do have.
Yeah, you know, I think we, and we do a pretty good job at this, but we need to incentivize people to stay in Sanford because of the services that the city provides.
Okay.
You do have rubbish pickup. You do have good response time with the police force, EMS services. You have an emergency room anyways up the hospital, or what used to be the hospital. So I think we need to focus on that. You know, I own some property, as I've brought up before, on a lake in West Newfield. It's about a half an hour north and west of here. And I would much prefer to have a heart attack here in Sanford than I would out at my camp. So someone once said, when you get older, you usually move closer to the hospital. You don't move farther away.
Right.
So I think that's, that should be something we keep in mind, that we can keep people here by providing good educational services and other municipal services.
But let me press on the affordability issue. I mean, I get that these amenities provide incentives, but also some of these amenities add to higher taxes. And I think an issue that you're raising is the affordability. There's a lack of.
If they grow out their first house, they have a couple more children, and then they're looking at life, where they go.
Yeah, so I'm really pressing on, are there things that the city council can do on this issue? And if not, yeah.
Well, I think that that's really the heart of these goals, right? And councillor Transmonting, the first one, I think, is one of the most important about those ongoing discussions about housing. And I, it could be helpful for your peace of mind and also to get some more background to watch the, I think it's on video, the housing workshop that we had in the last three months, I think it was, where we heard from, about some data about people moving in and out of our community. We heard about some of, you know, different housing resources and concerns and issues. But that was really helpful. So I think part of that can, doesn't, can also include better understanding and discussion about the concern you have about that next generation. You know, if in fact they're moving out, why are they moving out? Or how do we encourage them to move back? You know, and I think that's all of our dreams, right? Is that our kids might go away, spread their wings, and maybe someday move back home, you know? But, so anyway, I think that's addressed here. And I think that, I really feel like we did a great job working on these strategies, all four of them, in the sense of really looking at some of the housing concerns that exist and understanding them. Because really, as a council, we're not in the business of building homes, right?
Right.
All we can do is make sure that we're making it as inviting and as easy within our zoning to allow investors to come in and for, does that make sense?
Yeah, just an opportunity to retain the families we have, you know? And that's my whole.
So I feel like we're doing it in this.
Yeah, it's going to take more conversation, educating yourselves, et cetera. Okay. You've been very patient. Do you want to make a last comment on housing?
Two and three, address it. We have roadblocks to new construction in this community. Wells has less roadblocks. There's a lot of new construction happening in other communities, but not here. There's not a lot of turnover in housing in this community, which is why there isn't a lot available for people to buy in this community. So the only way to fix that is to have new construction. Why are we having no new construction? That's covered here, two and three. What are the roadblocks? So it's in here.
Okay.
We just got to work it.
Any other? Please.
So a couple of things. I'm going to go back to one. It says to me annually. I think that may need to happen a little more often. Maybe it'd be annually with any particular group or investor would be okay. But just want to make sure we're not trying to lump everybody into one meeting. And then two and three, I want to make sure that the things aren't being filtered through the Growth Council and that organizations, investors, builders, are able to come to the city council and have their roadblocks at least addressed or reviewed. So just want to make sure that we keep that in mind, that we're not using the Growth Council as a, as kind of a filter.
But that is the purpose of the Growth Council. They are to help businesses solve the roadblocks. So we would rather have them go there first than some of our zoning or some of the other groups here. If they go to Economic Development Committee, they will tell them how to work around that.
Well, we've had issues in the past where groups that were supposed to be helping with issues were ignoring them or just kind of filtering things.
Would it be okay if a developer went to the Growth Council first, but if they were not helped there, you want them to have an audience here? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that roadblocks are actually being addressed.
Okay.
Because we've had issues with zoning. We've had issues with, you know, fire department or the.
Yeah, you're right.
The fire marshal, things like that, that have been roadblocks for companies. And I just want to make sure that they're able to get an audience that can address that.
Okay.
I think, just quickly, it was interesting when the Growth Council's Board of Directors, the 11-person Board of Directors, was polled for high priorities. Housing, housing, housing came up just consistently, you know, across the board, you know, workforce and development and such under that. It all links back to housing. You know, if you have housing, you can't house your workforce and such under that. So it's a critical component.
Very good. I'm about to move on. One more on housing, please.
Or just a point of clarification, I guess, on number one, councillor Martel. So the annual reference, because I just want to hear what you're saying. So we put a lot of effort and time into gathering, oh gosh, were there 15? Or, well, that was with councilors. I think you might have not been able to attend. Were you at the housing? So that's in reference, I think, in particular to that type of setting.
The annual meeting where we review everything.
Yeah, yeah, so that's to get that voice from all those different agencies that work on. So that was a particular.
That's not necessarily saying that they can't come to us.
Why don't we say at least annually? Did you hear what I said? You were saying no to him, right. What if you were to say, just put a word to say, before the city council, at least annually to hear from partner organizations?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Or maybe to clarify that this is a workshop? Would that, does that make more sense? Meaning, we can hear these concerns anytime, but this is actually a concerted workshop? Does that help?
Something that annually isn't the only opportunity. Yeah? Okay, anything else on housing? Thanks for letting me push you along. Let's do Economic Development, Strategy C. Take a moment, read the words, and then we'll take your questions and comments. What do you think?
I'd like to see under the first, number one, it says, ensure continually improving transportation. The council's made tremendous investments there. RACE grant is kind of the culmination of all that effort. But I'd like to, just broadening that out to public infrastructure in general. And we have to continue to have the water, the sewer capacities, the transportation, the fiber, all of those public infrastructure pieces.
Any concern with that?
No, that's great.
It's not just about transportation infrastructure. It's civic infrastructure or public infrastructure, okay? Any other suggestions for changing the goal, the activities here?
Well, I know I get a lot of complaints that Sanford isn't business-friendly. I had a couple come to my driveway when I was first pulled papers to run for office, and they told me they're very successful. They have two restaurants. And they wouldn't entertain the idea, and they live in Sanford, that they wouldn't entertain the idea of going through the humiliation of trying to get a restaurant in Sanford. And so we, one of my goals is to make, so the appearance is friendly. We want businesses to come in here. That actually got me really sad when they said that, and they were serious. So we have to change so people will want to bring businesses here and not, oh my God, I got to deal with Sanford. We have to change that somehow.
Pete, maybe I would offer, you know, number two says, work to understand specific challenges. Maybe we could add, work to understand and overcome specific challenges. You know, actually do something to address the concern that you just raised.
A lot of voters wanted that.
So what I wanted to point out to Pete, because he's brand-new.
Yep.
One of the things that you'll notice throughout here is us addressing roadblocks, 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 because that is something we all do know is a problem. So I don't want you to think we all don't know it's a problem, which is one of the reasons roadblocks is mentioned. You can see roadblock, even if I didn't write the word roadblock with a hand, it's, you can see it in there. So just keep, pay attention for that.
Yep.
It is a problem.
Okay.
Right. Here it's called challenges, but it's.
It's roadblocks.
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 Yeah, I see roadblocks.
Yeah, okay.
This also goes back to what Jonathan was talking about too, earlier. It's covered here, yeah.
I had one minor thing. Where it says, new business investment in our city by supporting and listening to Growth Council lead efforts. I think that ought to be reviewing or something along those lines to make sure that we're actually critically thinking about what they're doing and where they're spending their resources to making sure we're overcoming those roadblocks.
So how would the council, again, I'm pushing to how would you actually operationalize that? Would the council spend time in a meeting reviewing the work of the Growth Council? Or do you want to have a report, a written report? Or what would that look like? They make quarterly reports already. So are you asking for something more?
No, I'm just saying we should make sure that our goals are actually following through and reviewing that and making adjustments as necessary.
Hold the Growth Council accountable.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he's making the assumption the Growth Council is the roadblock. Are you or no?
No, I'm just saying that they may not be communicating effectively what all the roadblocks are, or maybe that's not getting to the right departments. I just want to make sure that things that are identified as issues are turning into agenda items as necessary or getting addressed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on Economic Development section?
I think the marketing is good. Not a lot of places may know that Sanford's here and what we have to offer. There are some good areas for industrial-type development, for hopefully some job growth. So, you know, I'd like to see something more than just retail and restaurants. I know we have areas down by the airport where there's some industrial base, and it'd be nice to see that grow as well.
Okay. Okay, Ben, if you can show my screen, I want to share with you the notes that I've taken on all of Section 1. And this is not a complete list. And of course, it's going to be up to the city manager to actually implement these changes. But we've talked about the comp plan. We talked about the downtown. We talked about housing. And most recently, we talked about economic development. And I've made some notes. If I had to say top priorities, I think that the comp plan is a top priority in this section. I think that removing roadblocks is a top priority. And a third top priority is housing discussions. Do you agree with me that of all the things that we've talked about in the last 15 minutes or so, these are the top three priorities? I'm trying to talk and write at the same time, and I'm doing a really bad job. Okay, okay. Well, at least it's a sense of priorities in this section. We're doing a great job with the pace, but let's keep going, right? We've got still a lot of sections to go through. Onto fiscal planning. I'm going to read the goal statement, and then I'm going to ask you to quietly read Strategy A. And then I'll take your comments on the goal statement or Strategy A. The goal here is to practice strong fiscal planning by prioritizing the city's capital program, diversification, and expansion of the taxable base and delivering services in a cost-effective manner. Take a moment and read the Strategy A group of activities, and then we'll take your comments. Any questions or comments on Strategy A, fund capital improvement programs?
Just making, look at number six and make sure we make the adjustment for including, looking at alternative routes for motorized vehicles other than the rail trail. So that's all together. We had discussed this earlier, so.
A question, Steve. Can three and four be combined for this particular one?
I was trying to combine three, four, five, and six. Really, all of those speak to your capital program. So, you know, if you can combine that into the capital program with roads to average the 4 million, the Parkinson Rec, the 350,000.
I think that's basically you do three, and then you do bullets below it, so that you know which ones you're, in particular, taking a look at.
Fund capital improvement programs as follows.
Yeah. If you want to do something like that, I would make sure to have the bullets so we know what we talked about and what our. That's a way of combining it.
And then points one and two, you know, the continuation of feasibility is about defining affordability and when you can pull that trigger.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, properties are nearly complete and such under that. So that's, I think, one and two can be combined into a single, a single point as well.
Any other comments from councilors about funding capital improvement programs?
I think it's a good thing for the fire department, for both stations. So we have a lot of work to do for the citizens to get behind it.
Okay.
See you tomorrow, Pete.
Yep. It's important, we need it.
We have a fire station subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's his first, it's his first fire station meeting.
Just, so I was in Brunswick Sunday.
Is it done?
Talking with a, it looks very nice. But I was talking with a local business owner who was on the Fire Station Feasibility Committee. What an interesting conversation.
Was it torturous?
No, a lot of parallels, right?
Yeah, good.
About the difficulty in acquiring the land and the input and why this, not that. And, oh, it's absolutely the wrong location. It's a busy intersection, all of those sort of things, so it's.
Maybe Pete and I will take a road trip and go visit Brunswick.
Let's do it.
We should do that.
It was a great parallel.
All right, yeah, we can do that.
Steve can set up an appointment for us.
Oh, I think she's well-known in that community.
What?
I think she's well-known in the community. The business owner that I was talking to.
Let her know we're coming.
She can give us a tour and tell us about her experience. Okay.
My hometown, by the way, I go through that intersection all the time. It's right near my house. I'm not going to say anything more about it than that, probably. It's very impressive.
It's always contentious.
The new firehouse there is very impressive.
Beautiful station.
It's a well-built station. Absent location, it's a well-built station.
We saw two stations, Wells orally planned, Brunswick well-planned.
Oh, nice.
Even taking location completely out of the conversation. It's the quality of the city.
Location is really hard in Brunswick. We've got it with the base right in the middle of our community, yeah. But, okay. Are we ready to go to Strategy B? Let's talk about that, expanding and diversify the tax base. 20 seconds of read time, and then we'll take your questions and comments.
I'm pointing out, some of this relates back, so we shouldn't have to discuss it anymore.
Any comments? Pete?
I like the review of the non-property tax revenue. I like the review, the non-property tax revenue pay as you throw bags, rental fees, airport and permit. Maybe we can look at the ball pack for like community events, like, like bands, you know, and people will come to this and we can get some revenue out of the ball pack for our city.
Yeah, but we really need a new concession stand.
Well, we can, we can figure something out. But I think.
I'm not even running it anymore and I'm going to push for that.
We can, we can do a lot of things. I think that would be something nice to have a, a few named bands come to the, the city of Sanford.
Portland Symphony Orchestra said it was one of the best places they played because the acoustics off the grandstand were awesome.
Yeah, it's amazing. It's a, it's a great opportunity. The infield will not get ruined. And that's the biggest concern that I can see of. I know there was originally when this was given to the city, it was for baseball, it was for the community. I'd like to see if we can bring that hometown, community, local bands, battle of the bands. We all went to high school and that was a thing. See if we can just get a good hometown feel and, and make some extra revenue out of our ball pack. You know, jobs, you know, something.
Okay. Any other comments on how to diversify the tax base?
When they, when the council talks about the diversification of the taxable base, obviously the broader your tax base, the more favorable your mill rate because you're sharing that burden and such under that. But one of the huge pieces that was the driver in the land bank and a lot of the other initiatives was the, the overburden of taxation of the single-family residential home, right? So I'm looking for something to round this out that is part of that focused diversification of your, of your tax, taxable base. It's commercial and industrial that come in. I know you're talking huge priorities as far as housing. But for example, when I first started, 70% of the tax burden was on single-family residential home. We got that all the way down to 62% and then enters COVID and the, the real estate impacts and we're back up to 68% again of single-family, of the taxation being paid by single-family residential homes. So it's just that, right, we, we know what those impacts are, the, the smallest amount of movement as to who pays what. It impacts the single, single-family residential home and it gets back to affordability. Who, who can afford to have a single-family home in our community versus an apartment and such under that? So it's, it's a very overarching part of the equation. But the focus on the diversification, aside from the housing needs, we need more industrial.
Right. Okay, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. Is, is, is that in order to make residential housing more affordable, you have to work hard on your economic development set of strategies, hopefully to increase the industrial tax base.
Then you need a workforce and you need someplace for them to live. So there it is.
I'll repeat what Charlie Colgan once said. It's like, you have, the housing tends to come first. Then you have the retail that develops around the housing and the businesses say, oh, look at this nice pool of workers. Let's go, let's go there because they have a nice pool of workers.
Yeah.
It was funny the way he kind, it was totally different than what we expected because in the past, it was a big corporation coming in deciding to be in here, like the good old mills. And the housing developed around the, the workers who showed up from Quebec.
Right.
To work here. So it's kind, it's very different from what it used to be, so, which is interesting. So housing, 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 housing.
Right, right. You're back to housing and the importance of providing affordable housing, right, to attract industrial.
Remember Charlie Colgan telling us back in the 90s, you're going to run out of workforce at this juncture in time?
Yeah.
And I was sitting in the room going, that man is nuts.
It's sad that we lost him, right, isn't it, to California?
He was right. He was spot on. He predicted it.
Anything else on the tax base? Let's talk about the budget approval process. Take a couple of minutes and, or a couple of seconds, rather.
You should know that this has changed with one of the votes we took this fall so that we no longer have a finance budget committee. We have, the city council is the review authority for the budget now. So this is kind of written a little bit around that, just so you know.
Okay.
It's kind of like the first year of getting in a new order of business.
Questions, comments? On strategy C?
Seems all pretty straightforward based on what we have to do. Make sure everybody kind of understands what needs to happen and timing and pull everybody together. So it's good.
I'll just point out, like, this is where I would almost comment on the not, what we don't do so well. I'm hoping that everybody just focuses on, you know, education for ourselves ahead of even the big budget discussions. You know, pay, pay attention to what the school department's working on because eventually their budget comes to us. You know, just educate yourself a little during the process and it'll go much more smoothly when we, when it does come to us.
Any other comments? All right. Well, let me ask you about this goal area and if any priorities leap out to you. Ben, maybe can you show my, my, my screen here and you can look at the notes that I've taken when it comes to fiscal planning? What do you think are the, are, now, there doesn't have to be any top priorities in here. In fact, it'd be great if you came out of this meeting with, you know, not too many high priorities. Would anyone like to make a case that one of these things is a higher priority than others?
You're talking between the three strategies, A, B and C?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or even one of the specific actions.
Like an overarching theme?
Yeah, I'm looking for a, for a theme and maybe I'm fishing for something that's not there and that's fine. In the first discussion we had, I'm going to take you back to that, there seemed to be, you know, three pretty high priorities, comp plan, removing roadblocks and housing. And under this one, I, I didn't really see any, any jump out. They're all, they're all equally important, I would say, and maybe that's the takeaway. Let's, let's, let's let that be the statement then.
That's big for the citizens to trust us.
Well, I'm sorry, what did you say, Pete?
That's big for the citizens to trust us.
Yeah.
That's everything. We need them to engage.
Yeah. Nice. Okay, thanks. Thanks very much, Ben. Let's go to the last section here, goal number three. Responsive representation, to practice responsive representation of the residents of Sanford through effective and continual communication. I'm going to let you read those and then we'll talk about them. Any questions or comments? Pete, I think you've been, yours has been the first hand up almost every time.
I've been trying to do this.
It's either you or Morris, so.
It's, well, it's kind of fun because it's, he has a completely fresh perspective, which is nice.
So this host a bi-annual, annual town hall style meeting to receive input. What actually is the difference between when we have our city council here and then what are we looking for, for, at the memorial gym and open it up? Are we looking, what, what is this, you know?
Exactly.
I would want to know what are the topics.
Would it be beneficial to the citizens? Then we do it.
To make it feel, because I think when they come here, they feel it's very formal. Is there a way?
This looks like a prison in here.
Is there a way? So you remember Pete, I mean, I don't know if you ever went to town hall meetings at the old high school?
Yeah.
People showed up there. For some reason, they felt comfortable going there.
Yeah, in the auditorium.
And we were, like, when we did the housing, I was hoping we'd do it in a, in a location that was similar to that and we'd get more people showing up. But I forget what happened. We couldn't, or something happened that we couldn't. Because that's the, the idea is that. Is there a place that we could have a meeting where they could actually speak? They can speak at every single one of our city council meetings, but for some reason they don't.
What about the Sanford Performing Arts? They got a great spot.
That's where we had hoped to have the housing discussion and we couldn't.
It was around the, the use of technology for all the different formats are not, are not set up appropriately there for us to do everything that's done in this room.
Right.
This is where the investment was made.
So you know what, do we make compromises? Do we, do we find a way to, to, I would love to have a huge town halls and let them talk about their issues and let us explain issues because they don't obviously feel like they can come here.
Could be a lot of issues. We have no idea right now too. So I think that's a good idea to, to, to maybe look into this, to see if we can, see if there's a big support and then we'll do it again.
I actually missed town meeting because there, there was a nice bit of cabotzing that went on. It was, you know, it was cathartic.
So you're talking about in, in, you're wanting to create an in-person opportunity for people to talk and for townspeople to come together.
Given they have 15 minutes, yes.
Yeah, more than 15 minutes.
So what happens right now is people can come to the city council meetings and if there's, they can sign up to speak, but it's not a Q and A.
Right.
It's just a, here's.
Right.
An issue I'm having or a thought I have. And there's really no back and forth. So.
Right.
Well, yeah, we do have time constraints because, you know, meetings do tend to go along.
And you find them defensive, you know?
Well, and, and it, it makes it for a more formal kind of atmosphere where maybe people aren't as comfortable. So I don't know if that's, it'd be great if we had extra time where we could roll that into an extra, a normal city council meeting, but maybe we can, I, I think once or twice a year seems like that's pretty, pretty minimal. It's a good starting point, I guess. But it'd be, it'd be nice if we could maybe have something where we have a little bit more public comment at, say, maybe the subcommittees. That could be a little bit more Q and A. I know that's a little less, less formal. But, yeah, I think it's something we should look at. Because I, personally, I've, I've seen where I think people wanted to have, be able to have a little bit of that Q and A and weren't able to get it and maybe weren't really sure of how to, how to get what they felt like they needed, so.
How would you feel like, because I think the, with the housing, the idea was let's be topic-specific. Tonight, we're going to have a big, open discussion about housing. That way you don't go off on tangents. You'd like, if we're going to talk about a topic and we're going to have a community discussion, we pick a topic or two. That way, you know, the city manager's prepared for anything because you're, you're keeping it narrow so that you don't have to, because you don't want people pulling out things out of left field and you not have an immediate answer for them, which is one of the reasons we don't allow, which is one of the reasons you don't want the Q and A. The back and forth. So like, we had hoped to do it with housing. So we were prepped for housing and you, and I think, you know, would we have gotten more people at the Sanford Performing Arts? That's a huge question of, that's a big if. Would we have? And, but I think being topic-specific in these town hall style meetings, and I think we have to be cognizant of the effort it takes to prepare for this, which is why it wouldn't be, you know, as many, maybe either twice a year or once every quarter. I don't think you could do much more than that. But I think it should be topic-specific if we do it.
Other, other views on that?
I think one of the overarching things that, that I'm hearing really is about providing a, a new or different forum or format, right? So this council is, is the city, has been very, very open as far, people come to the, the council meetings, the public meetings, they can sign the sheet, they have a comment period. They're allowed to speak from the floor predominantly on, on agenda items and such under that. So the, the members of the public that are comfortable with that process, they come and participate. I, what I'm hearing is provide a different, a new format for those people that aren't comfortable being here.
To see if.
In a formal process, in a formal setting, right?
Independent.
Yeah. So, so when Jordan Wilson did our communication survey, it was everywhere where people got their information from and how they wanted to receive their information and such. She's assembling FAQs, right, as people ask questions. She provides that in the e-newsletter. Each, each bi-weekly issue people are submitting, she answers the questions and she's building a database now, right, of FAQs that we can refer people to.
Okay.
And such under that. But I think I'm really hearing that it's about providing a different format, a forum for people to come in and have that opportunity to speak and express concerns that's, that's not here.
Any other ideas on how to do this?
Informal. They can speak from their chair if they want. We can go around with microphones, you know. We could, there's a lot that we could, and see if the public comes to it, see if that's what they want. I've heard that they want this. But I wanted more of the council and, and the city manager's opinion and the mayor's on this. I would think, and deputy mayor, I would think that this would allow the voters to feel more in tune to what we're doing. You know, they'd feel more involved and part of the community when they're, a decision, you know, they, they contributed. And I think that's huge. That's, that's where I got.
I, I agree and that's why it's here as one of our goals. And I think that one of the big differences from, in my mind, when I think about a town hall style meeting is some back and forth conversation and that less, so I think not everyone realizes when they come to the podium that their public comments, we don't respond to. And so I love it when our mayor explains that public comment is a chance for them to share their voice, but it's not necessarily a place where we'll respond to, it's get sent to subcommittee or is addressed administratively. Because people don't realize that. They, they think they're going to come up and have discourse with us. And of course, we're all, you know, just up there in silence. It can be uncomfortable, frankly, right? So, so it's one, I think we have to do a good job explaining in public comment, making sure they understand that it really is just a chance for them to share their voice with us and then other actions taken outside of the meeting typically. But the town hall style meeting, I, I think is an opportunity. I will also say that we've tried it this year with our open house, I mean, somewhat of a public, that type of meeting with the initial raise grant meeting, with the housing, with the roads, roads workshop that we did. So I, we did implement trying some of this this year and sadly, it's still not, there's not a lot of community engagement. So, you know, I, I think we keep trying and think about ways to get the community there. And maybe it's a spaghetti dinner. People come for food. I'm, I'm serious, but I don't know how to get people engaged because we have tried it.
If you bring those little mini donuts, I would come.
Mini donuts. But we, we really have been trying, but we still have very low attendance. And I don't know if it's just location or, but I think we should keep trying.
And I also don't think the new high school would be the place for it because you're up on stage. I think the old high school where you're kind of in the pit and you were there with the people and not above them. I think any type of setting where we could arrange it that way would be better.
When we were preparing to bring the high school to the voter, I thought we had some great community conversations in the pit. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
I agree. So, I mean, and we were down there with a mic and we didn't go up on the stage, you know. Steve's doing his numbers game and the architect's doing his thing. And, you know, you have the passion of the Charlie plants out there and it was, you know, those were great meetings. And I don't think we've had something that engaging since then, I would argue.
I think it's worth looking into. What's your opinion, Steve? Because you've got more experience.
But it was the topic, right?
Yes.
It was the topic that brought the people out. I think if you.
But it was there too.
If you had that type of community engagement over this, in this, this ensuing year on the fire station, right, I think you'd draw the same, similar type of numbers and the same kind of passion.
True, and I agree with you. I think it's a great, that might be a great first conversation to do. But I still think in the pit is not a bad idea. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
By the way, the, the pit, it's our old high school has, there's a downstairs section. It was supposed to be a swimming pool if they got all the funding they wanted.
You can see it when you walk in.
How's that? You can picture it now.
So I've taken.
I'll plug that right out when we.
Notes on the, on the screen here.
Memorial gym's not a bad idea now that we own that too.
The idea is that you want to foster face-to-face interactive discussion about the business of the city. In this conversation, there's been no, no discussion of online options or anything. It's all, you know, in the room.
Yes.
And I've thrown out some, some, some ideas here. Are there any last comments on responsive representation?
I think bullet point, items number two and five definitely can be, can be combined into.
I, I think bullet point, items number two and five definitely can be, can be combined into, into one. Two and five. It's part of the communications coordinator overall, communication plan, so.
Did you say four and five?
Two and five.
I'm sorry, two, two and five, two and five, I'm, I'm sorry.
Because that would, number five would be the job of the communications coordinator.
Correct.
Yeah.
No different than she's, she's waiting to communicate these unladen adopted goals.
And one and three could be, one and three could be combined, too.
Well, by what, by number one, I had understood you to, to, to be talking about an in-person meeting.
Yeah, so, okay, so the Zoom. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, nice, nice try, Pete.
Thank you, Maura. Okay.
Okay? So I, I've made a list here of what I call top priorities overall. Of all the things in the, in the, in the goal statement, I'm making a proposal to you that getting started significantly underdeveloped, almost under, near completion of the comp plan is a top priority. Removing roadblocks for businesses is a top priority. Continuing housing discussions on how to keep families here is a top priority. And this last one, how to better engage the public is a top priority. You like that?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody can disagree with me if they want, the only thing I would say is under the housing, there's roadblocks there, too.
Yeah.
So, and, and on how to keep families here, I think it says it enough, but I just want to point out there are roadblocks to that, too, so, okay.
There's roadblocks to engaging the public and to, you know?
Well, no, it's the same roadblocks
Ah.
For two and three.
Then let's, let's, let's write it, does that work for you?
Housing in general. New construction, single family.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we just say continue discussions on how to keep families here with a focus on housing or something. And this would be, I'm turning these into statements now.
Now, Maura, you said that our, the population is pretty much the same over the years? Is it pretty?
Twenty-three thousand? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because this summer I remember talking to you about the population and I was, because I know a lot of families that are moving out.
I think, well, no, there's a lot moving into, well, there's no
There is, there's, into apartments.
In honesty, there's, you know, if we had more apartments that seniors could move into here in their community, because they want to stay in here in their community, they want to be here, then their houses would be available for the younger families to purchase who would want to stay here. It's, it's literally a lack of housing flow.
Is there a big gap?
And we don't have a lot of new construction occurring to fill that flow issue, to, to, you know, to fill that gap.
Well, there's new construction down by the road, it's supposed to be some
That's apartments.
No, it's not for the elderly.
Apartments, no, it's not, not the point. No, no, I'm talking about, so, though, the elderly, when they get into, if, if there are people from our community who get that, that housing, they, it's, it's not enough, it's, it's not enough to incentivize them moving out of their housing, there's, there's just not enough movement. New construction needs to fill the gap. There's a lot of people who are looking for housing, especially young families. Wells is building like crazy, Sanford isn't. So there's not a lot of new construction compared to what you see in some of the other communities. So if you can buy a, a house and it's brand new and you can get it in Wells or some other community that has new development going on at a faster rate, you're gonna, you're gonna just go there because you can find something that you want there. But Sanford really has not seen significant, significant housing being built. Probably, I'm gonna say since the 90s, maybe, where there was a couple in the 2000s, but we don't get big housing projects. We haven't for a very long time, I mean, look at the one across from Margaret Chase, that was during the recession of the late 80s, early 90s that that was built. That's the last really large one that I can think, that's the last, that's the last large, single-family housing development that I can think of occurring in Sanford.
And do we have any more elderly combined places to move?
We have good, we have a good look at the, the residential apartments are looking pretty good if they get started. That could be a help to get people to exit their homes and open up existing housing. But it's gonna be interesting, it would have been nice to have new construction, a lot more new construction options during this boom. It would have been great for Sanford, but we didn't, it didn't, wasn't there, wasn't there. Maybe that's one of the roadblocks, maybe we can encourage people to prep. Maybe we could encourage people to prep for the next time so we have a lot of projects ready to roll. How do we, how could we accomplish that, so?
I mean, one of the, I think one of the leading indicators that we're retaining families here or attracting them here is our student enrollment, in comparison to the rest, has not dropped, it's actually gone up. We're one of the few school districts, well, district, schools, schools in the entire state that does not have a negative population line.
In other words, we didn't drop to Class B like that dump in Bitterford.
Right, we won State Class A, most patents.
Your mic's on, you know.
They were, they, when we were, when Pete and I were in school, they were big rivals, I know, I don't know if they were
Oh, big rivals, oh my god, yeah.
And now they're in a different, like, weight class.
Yeah, right.
So it's poetic justice for us, because we really love that. Yep.
Folks, our, our workshop is coming to an end. If there is no further comments on, on, on my characterization of the overall priorities, we'll let them stand. Bob, you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think we need to think about changing the bullets a little bit and maybe make, remove roadblocks for businesses and affordable housing, the top bullet. Because that is a roadblock to everything else. I mean, the comp plan is a roadblock, so we need to get that done. And the same thing, we're talking about housing and so on, but my suggestion.
And I understand why you're saying that, Bob, but one of the huge roadblocks to planning for housing is not having the comp plan done. So it's, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg conversation, so I do not mind them being reversed, I just wanted to point that out.
Any other comments? Okay, so as, as we've discussed, I'm gonna prepare some notes for you, I'm gonna clean up what we, what, what I typed on the screen. I'm also gonna type up, up this wall for you. And you can expect to see a revised statement of goals from your city manager for you to adopt and make a formal decision at a future council meeting. Shortly after this meeting, I've asked Larissa to send each of you a link to a short evaluation. If you want to make comments about how the workshop went, what you liked about it, what you didn't like about it, it's very helpful for myself and, and, and the mayor. Probably we'll share the comments, why don't we, we'll share them with everybody, your comments will be anonymous. But I'll ask the city manager to share all the comments with everybody. That'll be coming to you by, by, by email right at the close of the meeting, or if I know Larissa, she's probably sending it right now. However, this is a chance to, to, to speak some, some last words. So as you can see, we've got eight minutes left in the meeting, so these are gonna be quick, quick comments. But if you'd like to say anything about the workshop or maybe something you're taking away, a hope for the future, maybe a concern, brief comments, we don't want to run over 8:30 and we're gonna leave a little bit of time for the mayor to say the last word. Would anyone like to go first and offer a brief closing comment? Let's go Bob and then Pete. Oh, we'll go Pete and then Bob.
I'd just like to say thank you, this made me a better city councillor by being here tonight. I think this was a good meeting, it's my first one, I don't know how they all go, but thank you for everybody back and forth. I'm gonna be leaning on a lot of you to become better, help the city, so thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we're hovering around the important issues for the council and for the, for the community and, you know, let's see if we can have actionable some of the things that we're talking about here this evening.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to thank you, it was a hugely, it was a big productive meeting, very helpful, I think it was, I think we made some good strides this evening and I'm, I'm thrilled that we're pulling the goals, like, it's, it's really kind of done that final bit to pull the goals together for us next year and I appreciate that, thank you.
Uh, thank, yes, thank you as well and I enjoyed it and I want to comment that I enjoyed having Steve at the table and your input. Sometimes he's not part of the table, sometimes he is, but it was great to have Steve part of the conversation.
And I just wanted to second some of those comments, thank you for coming out tonight and I think this was, was helpful and a little more informal, it's good, good discussions. And looking forward to solidifying the goals and some actions coming out of them. And, and I'd also like to second comments about having Steve as part of the discussion as well, so, thank you.
Well, Steve might want to say.
Very, very well structured, I appreciate it very much, very efficient, you get a lot done in a short period of time. I didn't say that, but I might be thinking of it.
I would like to point out that Steve looked at the agenda and he said, there's just no way we're gonna get to all that, so you did an excellent job at getting
Well, we did it, but, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was just phenomenal. And also I just want to thank everybody who, who came and I just felt you guys were very honest with your comments. It looked like you wanted to grow, you wanted to learn, you wanted to be a better council, so, and I think that'll, that'll come. And I found this meeting very relaxing, sometimes our meetings are just kind of tense and I didn't find that tension in the room, so I think it was fantastic. And I enjoyed hearing each of your comments, because, well, first of all, it's Pete's first meeting this way and so I'm glad you felt comfortable enough to participate. Domain is Well, no, I thought that was a good comment.
Oh, it was great.
I thought that was a great comment. And because we've been on Zoom for such a long period of time, I, I've known everybody except Jonathan and we've just started to know one another and this really, this whole process helped a lot. And I think when councillors get to know one another, it makes it easier to have really good discussions because it makes it easier to respect where that person is coming from because you know them better. And so I want to thank you, this was quite productive.
Great, my pleasure, thanks, thanks for inviting me to work with you and we can call this workshop